Please rise for the pledge. Pledge of the Constitution to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Stedek, will you take attendance, please?
Certainly. President Delisong?
Here.
Vice President Brazington?
Here.
Secretary Stedek is here. Trustee Schaefer?
Here.
Trustee Donnelly is coming, but not here yet. Trustee Guthrie?
Here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any changes to the board's agenda?
None.
Okay, we have consent agenda, item number three, which consists of the meetings, meeting minutes of June 27. And then we have five recommendations for employment. You'll be able to bring your packet, donate the motion.
Sure. Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Support Mrs. Guthrie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item four, pre-ranged to address the board. We have none.
Ooh, you're on pace.
Item five, Board of Education matters. We have quite a few recommendations for action. So, we'll just start Jenny and then go around and read them and then we'll go from there.
Start, A.
Yes, please.
Bank depositories, signature for banking plans. It is the time of year when bank depositories and signature policies must be approved. The following motions would be appropriate for board action. Move that Oxford Bank, JP Morgan Chase, Flagstar Bank, America, Fifth Third Bank, Huntington Bank, BNY, LOM, and Bank of America be named as depositories of school funds for the 2017-2018 school year.
Support?
Support.
Support. Mr. Brazington? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I move...
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Move to authorize San Barbara to transfer funds between depository accounts and transact wire transfers for investment purposes for the 2017-2018 school year with the approval of Timothy.
Support. Mr. Stedek? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, we have memberships. Membership into the MHSAA. Mr. Stedek? Or, I'm sorry, MASP.
MASP, yeah. I move that Oxford Community Schools Board of Education continue membership in the Michigan Association of School Boards for the 2017-2018 school year at cost of $7,748. That's based on student enrollment as presented.
Support. Support Mrs. Guthrie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Um, next, we're going to appoint legal counsel.
I move to appoint Thrun Law Firm PC, Butzel Long, Jeff Butler, Dixon Wright, Luskin Elberson as legal counsel for Oxford Community Schools for 2017-2018.
Support?
Support.
Support Mrs. Guthrie? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is newspapers for district publication.
Move to designate the Oxford leader of the Oakland Press for publication of legal notices for the Board of Education for the 2017-2018 school year.
Support?
Support.
Support Mrs. Schaefer? Discussion? Just a quick question, is it going to be the Oxford leader or, or is it going to be and/or the Oakland Press?
Or.
Or, okay, so it's as correct as it is.
Yep.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, appointment of board representative on property matters.
Move to appoint Timothy Thron and San Barbara to represent the Board of Education in all property matters and also authorize them to sign board approved purchase, sale, and lease agreements on the board's behalf for the 2017-2018 school year.
Support? Support Mr. Donnelly? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
We also have to look at MHSAA. MHSAA is voluntary, so we need to move to approve the MHSAA membership resolution for the year beginning August 1st, 2017 through July 31st, 2018.
Support? Mr. Stedek? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, that's all of our motions. Item six, curriculum instruction, Mr. Weaver.
Ken's not here, so I am going to take 30 seconds of his time. And I want to have a shout out to our OSEC program, Oxford Schools Early College, for being recognized both by the Mackinac Center and US News as one of Michigan's best high schools.
Hear, hear.
So, we received this very nice letter from Gary Peters and it basically is congratulating OSEC on a bronze medal for the 2017 school year. And Mackinac Center sent us a really nice certificate that OSEC received an A. And the Mackinac Center breaks down their rankings in a whole bunch of different ways. I won't go into all of them, but the overall ranking, Oxford Schools Early College came in 17th in the state. So, great shout out to OSEC. We will be, I don't know, putting that out there, making some promotional stuff and putting our plaques on the walls and all that good stuff. But, uh, just, you know, really good recognition for our staff, our leadership, both from OVA and our high school, to really not only create, but grow and build OSEC into a state-recognized early college. So, hear, hear.
Very good. Thank you, Janet. Thanks, Tim.
Yep.
What do you see, Ken, Tom, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Item seven, finance and operations, Mr. Barner.
Thankfully, I don't have any letters, so, hopefully.
Okay.
Not a single spreadsheet?
No spreadsheet.
Oh, boy, you have another spreadsheet. How about seven? All right, item eight, human resources.
All right. The board approved this evening's recommendations for employment for Jordan Ackerman, the athletic director, Krista Brown, who is a middle school mathematics teacher, Ashley Holm, high school counselor, Ingrid Jensen, DA or Clear Lake Spanish teacher, and Ann Oliver, who will be middle school special education math teacher. So, thank you for the approval. I think they're going to add a lot of value to our staff.
Very good. Thank you. Item nine, students services.
Back in February, February 21st, I did a presentation to the board on new laws on restraint, seclusion, and student discipline. Just to kind of refresh your memory, now there's seven factors that we need to consider before suspending or expelling a student. And in seclusion and restraint, you can only seclude and restrain. In emergency situations, they've identified what emergency is. There's reporting that needs to be done to the state, some other new law requirements. So, I am prepared to run those policies before you, based on those new rules. So, I think our next step is, I think on the agenda, the next thing you're going to do is appoint a policy committee person. And then I will meet with Pat and that policy committee person. On July 18th, we'll have the first reading of those policies. And then on the 25th, adoption of those. So, giving him. Fair warning, what's to come in the next two meetings.
We already have a policy committee? We do, but we have to...
They have to be, they need to be revised.
No, a new policy person, because Mike was on policy. So, we need to replace him. So, that...
I thought it was Mark. I thought you should replace him.
No, I was, I was voted on to or appointed to the superintendent review.
Oh, okay, okay.
Negotiation committee.
Before we appoint somebody, is there anybody that would like to volunteer to be on the policy committee? Currently have Heather. You're on the committee with Mark.
The review.
Yep, Tom, it was Tom, Mike, and I, I'm the superintendent.
Okay.
Or, Todd and I, yeah.
I'd love to do it, but I can't be here at 18.
I don't need you to be here at 18, this is...
I need to have a policy committee meeting prior to the 18th. Then it's the 18th board meeting. It'll be the first read, and then the 25th board meeting, it'll be adoption. So, what I need is committee to be...
Yeah, I tried to set up a policy, but it was really hard, because, you know, it's nice to meet the only during the day or get within 15 minutes of your... Yeah, it was really tough for me.
Since I work next door, I'd be happy to be on it. I'm usually available during the day.
Okay.
If that's easier.
It is.
I am a great committee.
I love you both, so I'm ready. I'm ready.
All right.
Thank you.
Get my pad fixed.
I'd like to move to appoint Tom Dowd, Tom Donnelly, to the policy committee for the calendar year 2017-2018.
I support.
Support? Any discussion? I do have, do we need to change this where it says 1617?
No.
I changed the motion.
Yes, yes.
She changed that, she read the motion, it's just written 1617.
Yep. I'm in the wrong, yeah.
It's okay. Big flag.
Welcome back.
So, we're good?
Yep.
Okay.
Excuse me, it needs to be the calendar year 2017, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Because, remember, we changed these, so it's really the calendar year 2017 versus 2017-8.
Okay, so we're going to amend it to say 2017 calendar year.
Right.
Okay.
Sure, I'll move to appoint Tom Dowd into the policy committee for the calendar year remaining in 2017, I think.
Support?
Janet.
Still supportive?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have some reading of bylaws. This was always Mike's favorite. They're lengthy, so it's kind of small here, so we have a watch. Mr. Stedek, please.
Move to first reading of bylaws. 0166 Agenda. 0168.1 Open Meeting. 0171.3 Secretary. Board Member Conflict of Interest Disclosure.
Support. Support. Dr. Brazington? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And it's got to be audience participation.
Yep.
Oh. It's okay, I thought we were going to put this on Heather.
Okay. Should I just hop on your other?
Sure.
Let's, let's just go move with it right now, since Heather falls under our closed session. We might as well have it under...
Okay. So, we met as a policy committee before Mike's resignation was official to go over a couple of things. So, you, you all got a copy of the Board Member Conflict of Interest Disclosure. So, this is something now we're going to introduce upon new members' arrival onto the board, so that we have it on file of any intent of potential conflict or whatever. And then we also talked about updating it once a year. As your job may change, or your role volunteering may change, or any community affiliations may change as well. So, that's where that came from. You can fill out today if you want, and we can kind of start from here. That's, that's what that is. And the second, the second piece is the citizen participation form. And that's just something that we're going to, we're kind of putting into place for participants. It's just a little bit more formal than what we had before, kind of with an index card concept. We wanted to have something more formal that helps streamline their questions and what information they were needing from us.
Okay. So, this is going to, this is going to take place?
Of the card.
Instead of?
It'll be...
This will be under unscheduled audience participation?
Correct, that's correct.
It's a citizen participation form?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Question? That's the form. The discussion about the five-minute thing, I know that sometimes, don't we try to limit it to three? I don't remember what the time limit was, and we really wanted to have that discretionary versus that on something really set in stone, where you're not put in a position where you can say nay or nay to someone speaking.
Well, I, I, I don't think the board president really should say nay to somebody speaking.
Or, for a length of time.
Well, it's, it should be, we just...
The board president reserves the right to adjust the time limit if necessary. Can we tell him why you want to put that in there?
I think we kind of talked about that. We had gotten a couple of examples from other districts, had polled a couple of other districts, and we got these different examples. They used so, I guess that they really felt like they had more, you know, like it was more of a, I don't want to say a presentation, but like a late in the night who did the 13 reasons why not. There's just more to say in the 15 minutes, so I think that's what we were talking about, that if they asked you or requested additional time.
The one thing that I don't...
What would you like?
Could they be, could they request to be put like on an agenda that looks like that kind of item? So, there wasn't a time limit?
It certainly can be put on the agenda.
To see...
When it has to be, it has to be. They have to request to have that put on the agenda within the 72 hours prior to our meeting. If they don't do that, this gives them the opportunity to speak. And that shortens that period of time. I don't think that, at least I try not to, whether it's positive or negative. However it is, I don't like to say, you know, three minutes. I don't want to be the one discretionary, say, hey, you know, if you got more, say, that's why I expanded it to five a couple of years ago. Like, we expanded it to five figuring, you know what, if you can't, you know, five minutes is quite a long time. You know, if the board sees fit to reduce it to three, I just think that when we get into those situations like Heather was talking about, where some, three minutes is a little bit short, I don't want to cut somebody off and say, well, you tied to three minutes. That was the whole intent of widening it up to five. And I can't recall there ever being more than one or two that have reached the five-minute mark. So, I would tend to leave it at five. And then it's a hard stop at five. I've been, when we have people addressing the board, I keep track of.
Yeah, I know.
And I, I try to keep it at, right at five. So, as long as we keep that going forward.
Could we put like, the person would have like three to five minutes to present? And then get rid of the work to adjust the time if necessary?
I would like to see that, because that falls a lot of pressure on the seat, whether it's me or anybody else.
Then you're going to need to adjust your bylaw as well, because your bylaw right now says five minutes.
It was, most schools that we looked at were all five minutes.
Okay.
So, if you're going to adjust it, it's no problem. We just need to adjust the bylaw in a policy meeting.
Okay, I think that's what we'll do. We'll, if you could make a note for the policy committee to make that change, so it reflects the same as what we have here.
So, so I'm clear on it? What do you want to go to, three to five minutes, or do you...
No, I want to make... Currently it's at five minutes, correct. I think if we leave it at five, we're not adjusting three to five. It's kind of up in the air. Five is a hard stop.
And so, you want to take out the board reserves?
The board president.
Board president reserves.
Okay.
I just think it's what's the person, whoever it is in his chair, in a position where, well, I don't want to hear it anymore, and I'm stopping, and that's not what, that's not the intent.
So, is that language in the policy pack? The board president reserves the right to run by law?
No, it just stays five minutes, I think.
I think we need to leave it alone.
Yeah, so we'll take it out of this.
Scratch that part out if necessary?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I ask anything to the discussion? I just want to clarify, this is under, this applies to unscheduled audience participation in our meetings, is that right?
Yes.
Where someone who comes, okay. I had some experience doing this a long time ago, but using something similar. And what really worked for making sure that that seat didn't get all the pressure to enforce that for, for us, was to, prior to the unscheduled audience participation for the chairman, to just quickly with the public, hit the highlights of what's on this form. And just say, you were asked to sign form when you came in tonight, just wanted to hit the highlights, make sure you know before you, if you're a developing user, this is the policy for how to address them. And just hit that, you know, you'll have five minutes. If you can make it shorter, if it's, that's fine, no pressure.
I think that's what we used to do, and we kind of got away from that. And I think people, I don't want to fill out form, and we kind of got lax on it. But it's a very good point. I think we, if we're going to do things the right way, let's just do them the right way all the time. You know, and you fill out the card, or you, you fill out the new sheet, or you don't participate.
And then if they, you're really just helping us, you can't stop anybody.
Yes, you are correct. You cannot stop them from participating. Okay. Let's put this in a plan of, we'll have these cards at least out there. Okay.
But, can I ask another question? It relates to what Pat just said. So, if you can't stop them from participating, can you still, and as you hit the highlights before this whole thing starts, say, you were asked to fill in the sheet? And if you didn't have an opportunity to do that, we still welcome your participation, but we ask that you follow these steps.
Yes. Yeah, well, they're...
And then we have said, what you've done, everything you can, you can do to control the...
Yep.
Okay.
Very good.
Well, I just wanted to mention the logical reason why that language would be in. In a board meeting where you might have a hot topic, and 50 parents show up and talk about the same thing, it gives you the ability to say, all right, I've got 50 of you that want to all talk on the same subject. I have to, for the sake of time, be able to limit this, so we're going to give two and a half minutes each, or something like that. That's why that language is there. It's because when you have a topic that's bigger than, than what one meeting can handle, it's your ability to be able to, I said the board really, not you individually, to say, whoa, 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 that's overwhelming. Because if you've got 50 people wanting five minutes. I just want you to know, that's why the language is in there.
Mr. Stedek?
The suggestion then with that is we could make that language say, the board reserves the right, and we could do an on-the-spot motion.
That does take some pressure off of you.
Well, I do...
That position.
Yeah.
It does.
To me, you know, I just, yes or no? I mean, it's, I just broadened it, because I think I went from three to five just because I thought three was a little bit restricting. And I just, four, I just made it five. But, we can do that. I mean, we can, you know, we can set parameters however we see fit.
Okay, how would we enforce the board reserves the right? How would the board adjust?
Well, we would, at that point, if we see that we have the 100-year storm. And we can start the gates by somebody suggesting, hey, maybe we should limit time on this since we've got 200 people that want to talk. Then we discuss it. Somebody, somebody makes a motion, we decide to drop it to three minutes at that time. And then we vote on it, it's not all on his shoulders, or whoever the board is.
Yeah, okay, thanks, explain that.
And if I do remember correctly, when we had those situations in the past, if there was a repetitive comment, the repetitive theme, it was addressed by the city president at the time. If there's any new items to discuss, then, then we'll prescript it forward. But we're not going to, you know, I, I'm not going to make an example, because then we'll be pulling something from the past. If we have any new business, please state it now, and if not, move forward. So, let's kind of tweak that a little bit.
What do you guys want to do, what's that based on?
Mark, you had a suggestion.
I think just take out the word president.
Okay.
And say, the board reserves the right to adjust the time limit if necessary. And we can take action on it if we deem it necessary. And we got to get a vote of four of us to do that. So, maybe some, maybe you two, because we're talking about women's rights, don't want to limit it. Example, whatever. And so, then you, and Joyce too. And so, you know, maybe we don't get enough votes. I think it's a silly example, but, but it makes sense. It shows the possibility. So, just take out the word president.
And are we keeping five minutes?
Yes.
Don't we have to change it then? Perfect.
And then that, that language only goes in this document.
That's right.
Which gives us that right to do it on the spot.
Okay.
Great. All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Thrun?
Just one comment, since your conflict of interest disclosure is new, and you just had the first reading tonight, I would suggest that you just don't do anything with it quite yet.
Okay.
Take it home, look it over. Then, if nothing changes and it's approved as is, then you all can fill it out and submit it after it truly becomes your...
Okay. And another point that I want to make on this, this does not stop anybody from volunteering. This is just a document that says, Dan does this.
Yes.
Or Heather does this, or Jenny did, or anybody volunteers in this capacity. This is not stating that you can't participate because of the board. But as I told a few of you, when you do that, you get into the, you're always, always a board. So, just be cautious of that. All right? Yes?
One last comment on the participation form. So, there'll be a backside too, if you didn't notice, just letting you know. Jenny had kind of asked like what the guidelines would be, or how we would, how they would fix it. Right, that is kind of, that would be on the back of the form. So, it just kind of obviously goes over the, what we hope that they would have of common sense, but it's just still a dialogue of what our expectations are.
Very good. Mr. Stedek?
One more possible suggestion than just, since it's on the back, why don't we put on the front, please refer to the back for whatever you want to call it. But just so people...
Okay.
If I put on notes to look at the back.
Yes, please.
Quit looking at my side.
Line two, inappropriate is one word?
Thank you, okay.
Okay. You all just started this, so I couldn't be this tired.
You got, you paid us.
You guys, you guys, there's one meeting in two years to get a jamming meeting.
Just simply stating the facts.
Yes. Item 12, clarification. Item 13, final, final board comments, Mr. Donnelly.
None.
Mr. Stedek?
None.
Mrs. Guthrie? You guys have a stop.
Congratulations on your OSEC. Thank you. I don't know how, gosh, I don't believe we didn't say. It's an awesome program. It is.
It's a high school, OVA, college venture.
All of it, it's just, it's awesome. The best of all schools. Yeah. Good job, Janet, very, very good job.
Very good coverage, comments, and what?
Okay. Yes, congratulations, Jan, please let the staff know. And Tim, let everybody in our district know. We tend to look at one school and say, well, the high school, and this, and then the OVA. But without all the parts fitting together and fitting the two, oh, it really is. One feeds off the other, and we cannot operate one without the other. And so, all the way from our elementary schools up to our high school, and bridges, and... And so all the way from our elementary schools up to our high school, and bridges, and OVA, and OSEC, they're all, they're all gonna break down. And I have, can I jump out of board comments for a second? Did you want to add any? Okay. I had a question, and I should have brought it up earlier. Did we replace the signatures on checks? Because it was yours and Mike's.
We should be doing that.
Paychecks?
Yes.
Is that something we need to do now?
We need to do that very shortly, yes.
Okay. Can we put that on the agenda for next meeting?
Yeah, we need to appoint a treasurer.
Also, wouldn't that position need to be?
We just need to appoint one of us. Yeah. Somebody to be on the treasurer. And I noticed that because I got my check available. I have to cash this real quick.
Well, Mike, since you're so good.
So if we could do that at next meeting, I think we should be okay.
So I think...
Because we meet in a week.
Well...
Treasurer, let's just do it now.
My recommendation is you appoint a treasurer right now, because there's gonna be a time lag of plates being created, and this and that, and the other things, so that that can go into effect.
Okay.
I think one of those are two roles, because I can't do some of the policy work, but I think our bylaws typically have individual people.
We do, which has had different...
I could help all that with that.
It couldn't be anyone. It's gotta be one of the three of you, and really, yeah, I think...
I move Jenny.
You want to make an official, you want to make an official motion?
I want to officially accept Jenny.
I'm sorry. I'm just thinking about terms expiring and all that kind of stuff. What is...
Mike's term.
It would just go through the calendar?
Yeah.
Then it would go again?
All the board positions get discussed.
So that would be okay?
So maybe in your motion, move to have Jenny be appointed as treasurer for the remainder of...
Of 2017.
Fiscal year. Calendar year. Calendar year.
I'd like to make a motion that Jenny Guthrie is our treasurer for the remainder of 2017.
Calendar year.
Calendar year.
Support?
Support.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, discussion?
Discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So that you can change it.
Thank you.
You get to.
I need to get busy.
Your name's gonna be on the checks.
Oh, wow.
Okay. Sorry, but I just thought about that. So I have a, item 14.
Move to meet in closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Section 8C for strategy in negotiation sessions connected with a negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement if either negotiating party requests a closed session.
Close. Support?
Support.
Mr. Stafford? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Closed session.
Okay. Thank you, Janet.
Do we want to discuss?
We wanted to just clarify.
Clarify the times of the next upcoming meetings. We have, do you have a calendar there, Pat?
I have a special board meeting a week from tonight, which is July 18th. And that meeting will be at 10 North Washington. That's gonna start at 6:00 PM, and that is specifically to interview applicants who are applying for the board position seat. And then obviously we'll have our regularly scheduled meeting on July 25th, also at 10 North Washington here, and that one starts at 6:30.
Okay. Everybody good? Yes, Mr. Donnelly?
Just one small thing. Over the last four or five meetings, we've tabled a few things, like getting some FOIA data, like start talking about a FOIA committee or a committee to the community. How do we make sure those things are tracked so they get brought back to us at appropriate time?
So specifically to the FOIA from information, Nancy actually sent that to the board today.
Okay, good.
And so that would be an agenda item that we would look to put on, probably not the 18th, since that's just the interviews. We would put that on the 25th. That gives you time to look over the data, and then the board can discuss what you may or may not want to do going forward, that kind of thing. And definitely, I'll have to just go back and look if there's other items that we had tabled, or other agenda items that you want to make sure we bring back up. Certainly you can reach out to you or Dan, either one, and we'll make sure we get those put on the agenda.
One last thing. For some reason, we've paused for when we might need to talk about your contract. Do we have permission now to mediate?
Yeah, your subcommittee can mediate.
Our subcommittee can mediate now?
Yep.
Because I remember last time you said hold off. Maybe it was just to get you on. I can't remember. But we're good to go.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Go to the Madam Center.
I've been some names.
I've been some names. Okay. Yes.
I was just curious, is there any way that we can include our July 25th agenda items into our July 18th meeting? Or are we afraid that would just go too long? I know you have some...
So right, and so on the 18th, I have to do the first reading of those board policies, and then on the 25th, there has to be like a...
We have to have, we have to have that done.
Over two meetings.
It has to be over two meetings, and it has to be done by August 1st. The law is, in effect, by August 1st.
That's a lot of times why we double and get like an additional meeting.
You can waive the two reading policies in your bylaws if you want. You could go for adoption with one meeting, but you need a motion, waive.
You need a motion at the time, waiving that second reading?
Yep.
Let's look at what we have on the 25th, what we're looking at, if it's gonna be...
So just off the top of my head, a couple of things. So you would have your interviews.
Correct.
You would have the second reading of these policies, plus your new one, once your policy committee meeting needs. You would also need to appoint your board member that night of the 18th, because that appointment needs, well, if we were to not meet on the 25th and move all of those items to the 18th, you would need to appoint that night, because that appointment needs to be made by the end of July, right? To begin our 30-day window. I'm not, it's your meetings. You guys want to do that? You can certainly do that. I'm just, those are the things off the top of my head that I know it would need to happen that night of the 18th.
I think if it was three of us, it could be at the point that that's, maybe just the appointment.